Progress.
Good morning, the City of Boston zoning board appeal hearing for May 21st, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate and the hearing is panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hands should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise him over your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham. You are on mute, but I see you. Right, Mr. Aiken.
Good morning, Madam Chair, here.
Morning, Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Okay, the floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the extension scheduled for 9:30 a.m. I will read all the extensions into the record together as we agree on the extension request that we've gotten forward. Then we make one motion on all. We'll begin with case BOA 1202529 with the address of 55 Bowden Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1044720 with the address of 3326 to 3328 Washington Street. Then we have case BOA 1019011 with the address of 22 to 24 Woodbine Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 982435 with the address of 198 Woodrow Avenue. Then we have case BOA 1110007 with the address of 47 Tomborough Street. Then we have case BOA 1067375 with the address of 28 Geneva Street. Next, we have case BOA 983485 with the address of 6 Lothian Road. Finally, we have case BOA 1080481 with the address of 32 to 34 Washington Road. And those are all the extension cases we have to this point.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant all these extensions in these cases.
As requested.
As requested.
May I have a second, second? Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
All right, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
I have a question on that, or chair to counsel just before we move on because each of those has different dates. I'm just wondering how that's memorialized.
That's why it's a motion to grant the extensions as requested. So all of those, all of them have made written requests to ISD.
All right, so it's just based on what ISD has on paper, not based on this? Nothing here in the recording captures those dates. So that's fine, I just want to make sure that it's clear what the extension date is at the end of, at the end of it for the public.
Of course, Samantha, if you want to add anything else, please feel free.
That's perfect, Madam Chair, as requested is perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the recommendation scheduled for 9:30 from the previous subcommittee meeting. We'll begin with case BOA 1584944 with the address of 82 to 96 Westland Avenue. Case was approved. Then we have case BOA 1572885 with the address of 3 Bruce Street. That case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1503897 with the address of 2010 Dorchester Avenue. The case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1585746 with the address of 45 to 47 Rayburn Road. The case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1575868 with the address of 294 Metropolitan Avenue. The case was approved with BPDA design review, paying attention to the roof line. Next, we have case BOA 1555503 with the address of 50 Prescott Street. The case was approved with BPDA review of paying attention to preserving the tree that was on the property. Next, we have case BOA 1495809 with the address of 8 Friendship Road. The case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1538430 with the address of 3 Rosa Street. The case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1538456 with the address of 94 Westminster Street, which was also approved. Then we have case BOA 1546755 with the address of 5 Reynolds Road, which was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1549736 with the address of 43 Knoll Street, which was approved. Then we have case BOA 1552488 with the address of 340 Baywood Street. This case was deferred until June 13th of this street year. Next, we have case BOA 1555663 with the address of 108 Murdoch Street.
This meeting is being recorded.
Which was, which was approved. Finally, we have case BOA 1518380 with the address of 104 Child Street, which was approved with BPDA design review.
Meeting is being recorded.
And that is all the recommendations I've left here.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
This meeting is being recorded.
Motion to approve the recommendations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Now, we will move on to the groundwater conservation overlay district here.
Do you want to ask about deferrals or withdrawals first?
Oh, I can do that. If there are any requests for withdrawal or withdrawals from the 9:30 timeframe.
Madam Chair, I see no raised hands, thank you.
No raised hands, okay, great.
Okay, things going on to groundwater conservation here. First, we have case BOA 1542280 with the address of 162 Boylston Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's 245 Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner. This is a straightforward G-Cod only based upon the threshold for the amount of renovations that are being done to the building exceeding more than 50% of the actual assessed value. I believe we've submitted the Boston Water and Sewer approval as well as a no harm letter. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Is Mr. Semenelli on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
May I have a motion?
To approve.
Second, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Mr. Stembridge, okay, Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1584690 with the address of 173 Commonwealth Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they explain to the board?
Yes, good morning, Paul Pfeiffer from JW Construction representing the owners of 173 Commonwealth Avenue. This also is just a G-Cod overlay district. We have the approved Boston Water and Sewer and No Harm Letter that we've submitted with our application.
Mr. Semenelli.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for second.
Second.
Thank you, overabundance, appreciate it. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Moving on to rest of the hearing scheduled for 9:30. First, we have case BOA 1546998 with the address of 545 East Second Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy. Business address of 168 H Street, First Floor, South Boston. Joining me today are the applicants, Tim Wilson and Luke Fallon, as well as the project architect, Tim Johnson. I want to clarify the advertisement for the record as the plans were revised, which resulted in removing two of the violations for parking and those plans are reflective in the drawings that you do have today. This is a proposal to combine three parcels and then subdivide into two lots. Lot one will be approximately 4,271 square feet, which will continue to house the existing commercial use at the space. Lot two will be approximately 4,656 square feet of primarily vacant land. This plot of land proposes to erect a new four-story, six-unit residential dwelling with a nine-car underground garage. All the residential units will be home ownership and the building will be fully electric. The new lot size is approximately 4,656 square feet, which resulted in a zoning violation, insufficient lot area as a project of this scope would require 7,000 square feet. But this proposal is in line with the neighboring properties and will allow for better utilization of the land. Further, there is a roof structure restriction violation, which resulted from a pre-existing garage structure in the rear of these three parcels that is being razed. However, there is little record within the ISD jacket of that structure ever being erected. Therefore, we believe we should not have been cited for this. The proposal is located within a multifamily residential zoning sub-district. Units will all contain two bedrooms and will range from approximately 1,267 square feet to 1,427 square feet. The ground floor will consist of the garage, the underground ground floor will consist of the parking garage for nine vehicles, a trash area with elevator access. Parking will be accessed by reducing the existing curb cut to an opening of approximately 15 feet. Second floor plan will contain units one and two. Third floor plan will contain units three and four. The fourth floor plan will contain units five and six. Lastly, we have an additional violation for the rear yard setback. The code requires a 20-foot setback, but under section 34-10, rear yards or shallow lots, the code require 18 and a half feet and exactly what this project is proposing. But due to the fact of increasing the underground parking to accommodate additional parking as requested during the community process, the violation did result. However, we believe we are conforming to underground encroachments within section 22-3 and as reflected within our drawings that you see here today. Therefore, it is our opinion this violation should not have been cited. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you, questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have a public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, our members of the board. Lydia Plasty with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was hosted on January 25th in regards to 545 East Second Street. The proponents also appeared before the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association to present the project. Concerns raised by the community reflect variances being sought, including building height on a lot within an existing single-story structure as well as lot area. Quality of life issues raised include neighborhood density and access to light and sky views. It was also mentioned that the 2010 First Street corridor planning process, which led to Article 68, was crafted with input from the neighborhood to reduce variances along this corridor. Support from the community includes development of an empty lot into housing, exterior aesthetic fits with the neighborhood, square footage complies with allowable FAR, corresponding off-street parking per unit, sufficient open space and multi-bedroom units which could appeal to families. The Friends of North of Broadway Civic opposes this project. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association supports this project. Our office received eight letters of opposition from the abutters and eight letters of support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura speaking from Council of Flynn's office. At this time, Council of Flynn would like to go a record and support based in good faith compromises on both sides during the community process. These include that the latest iteration of the proposal has increased the project to nine parking spaces. The rear of the building was shortened, the rear balconies were reduced, and the bulkhead of the roof door over the back stairs was subsequently replaced with a hatch. Council of Flynn appreciates the attention to South Boston's existing parking crisis. I respectfully request that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues on my horizon when the construction face, thank you.
Thank you. Joe, are you looking to give testimony here? No, okay, go with his hands. Did we have a few raised hands?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yep. Ryan Douglas, you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, good morning and good morning, Madam Chair, good morning all. Ryan Douglas, on behalf of 559 East Second Street Condominium Trust. You know, here this morning, just to voice a couple of concerns regarding the west-facing unit owners of 557 East Second Street. The west-facing unit owners are abutters to abutters within 45 feet from the proposed projects, give or take a few feet. And look, you know, as a whole, we like the idea of this project. We recognize that new multifamily development is crucial in South Boston, especially where there's developments that create off-street parking. I mean, that's huge, as was just mentioned, that there is a crisis at the moment. But the big concern that we have here is the height of the proposed development, which after doing a shadow study has unearthed some pretty concerning revelations regarding shadow. We actually have a shadow study animation here and I am prepared to share my screen to show the board that at the moment, if that would be acceptable.
We cannot show other people's screens, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
We're unable to have you share screen.
Understood. Well, in essence, we've completed a shadow study which shows that there's significant shadow that is cast because of the fact that this is a four-story development rather than a three-story development. We based off the same times and dates of those used by the project proponents. The additional height at four stories as opposed to three will cast significant shadows on the west-facing units, substantially reducing the amount of natural light that these units receive. And our studies demonstrate that these shadows will extend across the units much of the day, particularly in the afternoon hours. The reduction in natural light will impact the unit owners by diminishing their living conditions, affecting aesthetic and functional values of their homes, you know, which of course could have an impact on property value. Although the biggest issue, of course, is just out of diminished light and that's really the legally, the particularized legally cognizable harm that really exists there. You know, they'll.
Please wrap up, I know there are others who have raised hands.
Yes, I understand. I just want to emphasize this one point to the board that, look, the unit owners understand that there's a need for housing in South Boston, especially ones that create off-street parking. You know, I typically represent developers and yet we have to not always, you know, assume that everyone who's opposing a project just wants to shut the whole thing down. We don't, we like this project, we just don't. It being four stories as opposed to three is actually going to have real legally cognizable harms to these unit owners. And to that end, we'd ask that this be denied at this point, so.
Thank you. Okay, and then I'll go to Georgie and then Casey.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you state your name and address for the record? Let us know if you support opposition.
Yes, please. I'm a trustee of the 3430 H Street condo association, the six-unit building immediately behind the proposed development. I would like to oppose to today's motion and the main reason mainly is nobody engaged with us, which is shocking, to be honest, on this proposal. The reference support of the Gate of Heaven Community Association is simply irrelevant if you didn't meet with the neighbors of the adjacent abutting properties. We experienced complete absence of publicly posted information on this proposal. So I would kindly ask the board to postpone the decision on this and ask the developer to engage with us and walk us through the plans. The quoted violations are of high concern for all members and I second the previous speaker on a wall, giant wall, blocking any light into the rear of our house where we will basically be immersed in some kind of darkness. We also have receding soil issue and impacted water flow. There is a huge drainage issue historically right by the fence in the driveway. So we are very concerned about structural damage to our building during the construction process as well. So we want to engage with the developer for a substantive discussion of the parameters of the project.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go to Rob, as a trustee. Can you state your name and address for the record, what and tell us if you support opposition?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you for holding this hearing and permitting comments from the community. My name is Rob Van Martyr. I'm a homeowner at 557 East Second Street at Unit 3 and also a 20-year South Boston resident. I'm speaking in opposition to the development of 545 East Second Street as it's presently proposed. For context, my home is part of a two-building, eight-unit development at 557 and 559 East Second Street. These buildings were constructed in or around 2008 and are townhouses with front and rear facades that are arranged to the east and west orientations with the driveway from East Second Street between the two buildings that access separate single-car garages for each unit. The proposed development lies to the west of our building and is separated via a two-story commercial building at 555 East Second Street. While I certainly appreciate the outreach from the proponents and the work to listen to some of our concerns, the present requested variance have a negative impact on our existing homes by at the least casting our balconies and our only source of western light on our third floors into shadow during certain times of the year and in particular the shoulder seasons that offer the more pleasant conditions to enjoy our outdoor spaces. I'd like to also point out that the zoning ordinance for this neighborhood, as some of you may recall, was a multi-year effort with considerable community input. The resulting regulations were a response to the sensitivities of the community, to excessive building heights, massing, and inappropriate uses, among other concerns. While we certainly sympathize with the need for housing in Boston and agree that there is a better use for the existing parcel than as it exists presently, we respectfully request adherence to the zoning ordinance for the area, in particular, as I understand them, section 29 roof structure restrictions that limits the building height to the height of any existing structure on the site, and section 8 setbacks in lot area. Contextually, East Second Street from H Street eastward, the neighborhood is primarily composed of three-story structures. In fact, the development at 2H Street presently under construction across the street from our homes and approved through the Article 80 process is a three-story structure with parking underneath. We take exception to the BPDA response to the proposed development, citing taller structures contextually and offer that these taller structures are largely limited to the west side of H Street along East Second. We would certainly support development.
Please sit up.
...that is in keeping with the zoning ordinance or perhaps with the variance that would limit the height of the building to three stories or thirty feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Madam Chair, would you let me keep going? How many raised hands do you have? Four raised hands. I'm gonna ask some of you to put your comments in the chat and go with two more. Go with two more, Eric. Christine? And please add new information.
Hi, this is Christine Coleman at 543 East Second Street, and I'm actually in support of the project. I think anything would look appealing to the building as it is now. I think the parking in nine spots is sufficient, and I think the design looks fantastic. I think it'll look great in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Christine, what's your address?
543 East Second Street.
Thank you. Russell. All right, Russell, I sent a request. I need you. Casey, go ahead.
Hi, Casey Rhodes, owner of 523 A East Second Street, Number Two. I would also like to voice my support for the project. I think it fits in well with the neighborhood, and the applicants communicated well through me throughout the whole process. So I'd like to just voice support for it.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands. Thanks. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, could I, is there any chance I could just respond to some of the things that we heard briefly?
It would be helpful, yes, especially about height and...
I know the attorney, the attorney for Newman came in, and a lot of this was about height. So as you all know, we are compliant under Article sixty-eight. The requirement is forty feet. The proposal is at thirty-nine feet. However, we do have that roof structure restriction. If you could see from the existing site plan, in the rear of all these properties there, there was a structure that was a one-story garage structure that was probably erected. And due to the fact that there is nothing in the ISD jacket, we believe that we shouldn't be bound by that roof structure restriction. And then further, we do have a violation for insufficient lot area, and then as well as the rear yard setback. But again, the rear yard setback, we are complying under the shallow lots, exception at the eighteen-and-a-half feet. So that would leave us typically with one de minimis violation of the additional lot area. So thank you again for letting me respond, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. So, to me, I think the parking is excessive, so you're at about one-point-five spaces per unit when the preferred ratio is point-seven-five spaces per unit, and it seems like if you had fewer parking spaces, the footprint of the building could be smaller. So was that ever considered, or, you know, why so much parking?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Weewell. Yes, so originally, our plan, we did have, the original plan had less parking, but throughout the community process, we did have an Butters meeting. We did meet with Gate of Heaven Civic Association. And one of the concerns was to provide compliant parking. So therefore, we increased it. And again, the only increase of the actual building was underground. And again, that's, but as far as we appear, we comply with the encroachments under Article, Section Twenty-two-three.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review. I think height's good for the area, and I think that that area desperately needs parking as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I think that the requests are appropriate for the context here and the site conditions, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-eight-four-five-zero-seven with the address of twenty-one thirty-six to twenty-one forty Washington Street. I've been informed, Madam Chair, that this case will be deferred.
Okay.
But if the applicant is or knows their representative is present or they want to explain to the board?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, our business address on Fifty-one Dobson Road. With regard to this, it has to be re-advertised. There were two violations that were not advertised in the notices that went out. So the ZBA office is scheduled to re-advertize and reschedule this hearing. So we are asking for the deferral, administrative deferral.
Thank you. Next available is Matta.
June twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-seven-three-two-six-three with the address of seventy-three to seventy-five Holden Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present with their explanation, please.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity to appeal. We are here appealing Article ten, Section One, Limitation of Street Parking Area. Our objective here is to have two parking spaces, off-street parking space on the driveway, and we would like to have your support on taking two cars from the street and using this space for parking of two cars. Thank you.
So can you clarify where the second spot would be? We have a comment from BTD that they consider it front yard parking?
No, actually, we have thirty-two feet. When we look and go far, we are removing the basement stairs that's being removed. We're going farther back. We have space to be parking from the building to the back. There will not be car parked in front where the area went. I actually measured, if I may, let me see if I can screen my...
Can I share your screen, so just...
Can I share my screen?
No, you can't, so please speak to the plans you submitted to.
Oh, okay, I had pictures, but if I can't... Actually, there is pictures that if we remove the stairs, we were able to park two cars there because we have like almost thirty-two, thirty-five feet back, and then we have two car there without parking in front of the premises.
What is the current street, like, what, are these residents only parking permits on the street? Are they, you know, anybody can park here? Or what is the street situation?
Anybody parks there. There is not a resident, I have the owner. Actually, Madam Chair, we did meet with the community this weekend, and it seemed that most of the people there are in support having this parking, Mr. Jose Gomez having our street parking. That's a problem at night. When it comes, it's very difficult to find parking on the street sometimes. He has to walk while, so he wants to invest in this yard.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Is Bob DeBeek on by chance?
I don't know, but he submitted a written comment that was not in support due to front yard parking.
That's what I needed, so, okay.
There is no front yard parking as we were here. If not, if then the board decide to have one car, then we'll go for one car. But as I measured the place, there will not be front yard parking.
Other questions from the board?
So we'll be taking away street parking with this curb cut, I assume?
There will be, that's why we wanted to park there. But some of the neighbors do have side yards and parking. Our interest here, yes, we would take it. That's why we wanted to park two cars.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think this board in general, is it not in favor of just taking away both open space and street parking for everyone to put a driveway in if the house didn't come with that? And you're near transit, it doesn't necessarily fit the goals of this city in terms of our parking and transportation planning.
Madam Chair, I am of a belief that when somebody passed a million dollars, two million dollars in Dorchester and not able, it's more amicable for other people to come and park, and you're not able to be able to park off-street. It's a deconsideration for the people that actually invests in Dorchester and not be able to have this. We're more friendly to visitors.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeBeek.
And I think, and I think the way to remedy that is organize your neighbors around resident parking.
Let's open it up to public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board and background information on the community process. ONS hosted an Butters meeting on November first of twenty-twenty-three. The applicant then went on to meet with the Mount Boden Betterment Association, which voted to support this proposal. I run away of any concerns at this time. Without defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I'm gonna motion to deny, just because it's privatized parking. One spot is technically, I know it doesn't seem like it's in the front yard, but it is technically front yard parking. So you're taking one spot off the street for a personalized spot.
Is there a second?
It is actually spot...
Second, we're voting now. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, and I just want to add, the other reason I'm voting against this is I want to be very mindful about where we're being asked to approve additional paving. When I looked at the climate ready map, this is an area with high daytime temperatures, so I just want to be very cognizant about adding to that and exacerbating that, so, yes.
Thank you. Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-two-eight-nine-three-one with the address of fifteen LaBont Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, they explain to the board, please.
Is it Mr. Woodworth? Are you presenting?
Yes. Hello. Thank you, Madam Erin Woodworth, Nine Elizabeth Street, representing the owner. This is a proposal for a new triple-decker on a vacant lot to provide housing to local residents, three off-street parking spaces. And we've met with both the Butters and the Community Association and received a letter of support. We believe this is the highest and best use for this lot for meeting with the Jade Properties, and we expect that the design review process will continue to elaborate on its physical appearance.
Okay. Are you presenting anything else, or is that it? Any questions from the board?
That's pretty much it. So...
Can we see a site plan and whether there's any landscaping anticipated?
And the parking configuration?
I think it was the other...
In my experience...
Yeah, right there.
It's been my experience that the provision for the design review is the opportunity to determine the appropriate planting.
We typically see a site plan.
Yeah. One of our recommendations was for usable open space. There's limited area along one side and a small backyard to plant in a fashion that buffers from the adjoining properties. My experience is that the BPDA has recommendations for planting materials that we did not anticipate or prejudge. The owner is also present, and I believe would like to comment.
Is that...
Matta?
Yes.
Go ahead, Matta.
Hello, good morning. So just to answer your question, when you're looking at the property on the front part in the left side of the property, will be all grass, and then I'm gonna put some brush on the left side. The right side wouldn't, because that is the driveway, just like my adjacent properties are laid out right now, where you go there on the right to allow you to get to the parking in the back. So on the front part of the property and on the left side, it would be all grass with some brush along the left side of the property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted an Butters meeting on February twenty-first. Residents who were in attendance were supportive of the project, feeling it was in line with other buildings and structures on that street. They met several times with the Greater Boden Geneva Neighborhood Association, which ultimately ended up supporting this proposal. Without defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're trying to see if anyone else wants to speak, but we have no raised hands at this point. Thank you. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-six-three-eight-seven-six with the address of nineteen-oh-five to nineteen-oh-seven River Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain, please? Yes, Mr. Stembridge and Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate your time this morning. My name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law, the business address of three-five-nine Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. Would you like me to...
Yeah.
Sure. So we are in a two-F five-thousand sub-district, which requires eight thousand square feet of land to build a two-family structure on it. Our lot size is approximately eighty-one hundred and twenty-four square feet, so we do have the requisite amount of front inch, not a cited violation. Due to the, if you look at the front elevation there, you'll see the kind of capping over the front walkway that does trigger a front yard setback issue solely for that front stoop. We do have two existing curb cuts. We do front on two streets, both River and also Solaris Road. So there is a pre-existing curb cut to the front left of the structure and a pre-existing curb cut to the back rear. On River Street, there is no on-street parking on our face on that side, so we are not removing any public parking in the favor of privatizing parking there existing curb cuts. So our cited violation for the proposal of a two-family structure, kind of townhouse left, townhouse right, is a front yard setback issue, a side yard for the proximity of the proposed existing driveway to the left lot line. If there was an existing driveway servicing the existing curb cut, it would effectively be a pre-existing non-conformity. Uh, and then we have a rear yard insufficiency for the um rear bulkheads and the rear decking. Uh, but again, the proposal is for a two-family and a two-family five thousand sub district, of which we have requisite amount of land and usable open square footage.
Okay. Are there questions from the board?
Is there a is there a reason the parking set up like that with the with the two curb cuts?
Um, we are merely taking advantage of pre-existing curb cuts. Um, so we did not seek them. We did not install them originally. They've been pre-existing for a time.
Okay.
How wide is the um, I'm sorry, like the more bottom parking configuration? Because it looks like there's more paving than is really needed unless, I mean, I imagine it's for maneuverability too, but.
Uh, so arguably, I think to your point, I think the the additional paving in front of the structure might let itself to front yard parking. I think that the owner would be willing to, you know, sacrifice that. Um, in full disclosure, uh, our current, my current client bought this product kind of mid-stream in late last year. So we're merely stepping into pre-existing plans for a refusal letter dated and issued in January. So I think the client was willing to, you know, make some sacrifices if that's a matter of making that front yard area permeable or striking it. I think that that would be reasonable.
Okay. Other questions from the board? And may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, good morning. My name is Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for the applicant on February twenty-first. There were some concerns um raised by Director Butters regarding uh previous upkeep of the demolition project. Um, but the applicant did respond, making clear that um that was prior to his purchase. Um, so that seemed to address and and um I guess made made everyone in the meeting happy. Um, moving forward, um, they are working on getting um the uh Hyde Park Neighborhood Association's um upcoming agenda to present to their group. So that date is still pending. The uh group is aware and tapped into this conversation. That date just hasn't been scheduled yet. Uh, but we are in conversations at this time. Our office would like to defer to the chairwoman's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands. Thank you. Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I just with particular attention to the elimination of any possibility of front yard parking.
Uh, Mr. Collins, would you like to?
That's fine, we can have that then.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA one five eight nine seven seven five with the address of thirty Pinewood Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain to the board please?
Hello, my name is Rep. uh, representing the uh owner for thirty uh Pinewood in Hyde Park. So we are here to seek a relief for this project under section sixty-nine. We have XX uh square foot ratio, frontage insufficiency, side yard insufficiency, and the rear yard insufficiency. This originally is a um a single family with uh almost a half of a a story. There is uh some bedrooms on the existing part of the building already. And what we are seeking to do is to actually increase the square footage in the third uh in the second floor by just lifting up the roof a little bit and then uh creating a little deck at the back. And so when you look at the site plan, the only thing that we have here is we need, I think, about thirty feet. And if we put a deck of eight feet, then we are shy of three feet. So we need a relief from there. As for the side, both sides of the building and front, these are pre-pre-existing conditions that this proposed project is not going to affect it in any way. The other thing is the height limitations. Uh, we have looked into the design area and we have decided not to exceed any of the buildings over there. I think this project is in line with the neighborhood area that uh we are proposing to have this uh building done. If there are other history of of the building, I think my client will be the first person to be able to explain some of the history of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm just the owner.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. Questions from the board?
Not right now.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony? ONS, are you on? Is was it Cecily? Is there someone from ONS?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sorry about that. Um. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for the applicant on March twentieth. They met with the East River Neighborhood Association on April eighth of twenty twenty-four, who are in support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the chairwoman's judgment. Thank you.
Okay, caller, um, six one seven three six four, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address and let us know if you're in support or opposition? Hello? We can't hear you.
I'm I'm, hi.
Oh, we do hear you.
I had my hand up for the last um last hearing on River Street. And I wasn't, I I wasn't recognized. I didn't know my hand was still up, but I wasn't recognized.
Okay, well, unfortunate unfortunately, we've moved on to thirty Pinewood.
Well, I unfortunately, I had my hand up and and.
Sorry that someone missed you. All right, we can raise this hand after we called it in. Uh, but is anyone on nineteen oh nine River Street? Are you looking to give testimony for this proposal? I sent a request up to you.
Hi, hi, it was the same case for me as well. I was, I raised my hand for the uh nineteen oh five River Street as well. Um, and I have a few neighbors who are on the call listening in. A bunch of us who are neighbors of that um proposed plan have been on this call waiting to be able to say something. And now everybody is saying, uh, unfortunately, that has passed, but we were here at the time. So we, I need to know how we can revisit that, who we need to go to, because we are residents of this area. My specific property, along as my neighbor, as well as my neighbor who was on this call as well. Um, we live right next door at nineteen oh nine, so our voices do need to be heard.
I'm going to ask Samantha if, uh, what the protocol would be.
Madam Chair, the board is not in violation of the open meeting law. Um, in terms of advice, I think that is up to you and the board, but we are in the middle of another case at this time. And our office can be in touch with the applicants following the hearing, as we are currently in the live hearing.
Okay, thank you. So I think, uh, please follow up with uh the the ZBA staff. Uh, and we will proceed with thirty Pinewood. And then David, ladies and gentlemen, do you have a question? Because we're taking testimony.
No, I just, I wanted to just add to my contractor and a little bit on the fact that it's already a single family, it's going to remain a single family, it's a story and a half property, and we're basically doing veteran in the second level. We're not building out to the left or the right or the front. We're just building a deck which is far away from the property line. And I've gotten a lot of letters of support. Um, and they are actually happy because this property has been abandoned and even squatters were living in it. So we're just looking for your your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other public testimony? Do not see any raised hands at the moment. We want to give it a second or two, but there's no raised hands. Okay. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, next, next we have case BOA one five eight three one three seven with the address of fourteen eighty-one Center Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stunbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business adjuster fifty-one Dobson Road. And with me today is Mr. Juventz Hotel, who is the owner of the um preschool and the property. So Madam Chair, today we're here to seek to change the legal occupancy of from a two-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling with a daycare preschool. Here, the zoning seventy district one F six thousand. Our lot size is eleven thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. Our violation is the daycare areas are conditional use, so we are seeking conditional use permit. And it's a change in the non-conforming use simply because it's a one-up zone and it is existing uh two-family dwelling. Um, again, it's a Spanish Montessori school, preschool, students, about sixteen to eighteen students. Um, the hours of operation are from eight-thirty to five-thirty. Um, and that's it. We can open it up to questions. Pretty straightforward. Just um changing the occupancy to include preschool and daycare.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing, I'm sorry. We do have some new credentials. So, Local one thirty-eight has all the same credentials. Who's? I'm I'm sorry, is this related to the case?
Not at all.
Mr. Langham, can you mute yourself?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proponent completed an ONS community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting and appearing before West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, uh WRNC voted to support this proposal. And with that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, uh, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Um, I just want to point out that BPDA suggested no building code relief as part of the approval. I don't know if you're interested in that. They did also.
I don't think we can offer, can we even offer building code relief?
That wasn't requested. I'm not sure the.
We don't, we don't, we we don't need any.
Yeah, no. Okay, that's, we just wanted to point it out. Thanks. Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
The next two are companion cases. First, we have case BOA one five two one nine five two and the address is two fifty-nine R to two fifty-nine RF Market Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one five two one nine five zero with the address of two fifty-seven Market Street. Um, these cases will need to be deferred. If the applicant and or their representative is present, they can explain.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Attorney Matt Apple with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of one hundred Franklin Street. Uh, I do apologize, I had some technical difficulties during the first call for deferrals, but as Mr. Secretary noted, uh, we do need a deferral and requesting one at this time to allow the project to be re-advertised as the original notice did not include all the proper violations. Uh, in discussions with the ZBA staff, I believe the hope was to have it re-advertised for June twenty-fifth, uh, if that pleases the board. Uh, so at this time, we're officially requesting a deferral. Thank you.
Okay, Samantha?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair. The date is June twenty-fifth.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until June twenty-fifth?
Not a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, it looks like we're on break until eleven.
Recording stopped.